Hello and thank you for tuning into the 2025 Ward Eight and Ward Nine City Council Forums. I'm Tony Chanel, the Senior Local Editor for the Concord, New Hampshire Patch News and Community Website. This forum was recorded on October 21st in the great studios here at Concord TV housed at Concord High School. Thank you again to the staff and volunteers here for making this event happen and helping us bring all of the candidates to you this election season. During this forum, we'll be hearing from four candidates vying for two separate city council seats and two separate wards on November 4th, each with a two-year term. Lots of twos there. Each candidate will be given one minute in opening and closing statements, and then I'll ask questions in between. From left to right, we have Jonathan Kate, who's running for the Ward Eight seat. We also have next to him, Ali Seko, the incumbent for Ward Eight, seeking his second term. We also have Andrew Georgievitz, who is running for the Ward Nine City Council seat, and Chris Schultz, the incumbent, who is seeking a second term for Ward Nine. Gentlemen, is it okay if the lady goes first? Chris, do you have a one-minute opening statement? Please, and thank you.
Thank you so much to The Patch and to Concord Television, who always is so great in covering everything for the community. My name is Chris Schultz, and I am seeking reelection for the first time for Concord Ward Nine City Council. It has been an honor of a lifetime to serve. I like to say that I'm one of many "love your neighbor" candidates. I think especially more so now when empathy and compassion, for lack of a better term, aren't as favored in some areas as before, that this is a particularly important time and in elections in general. If you can show compassion and loving your neighbor even when you disagree, even when you don't like them, or any of those sorts of things, or even if you don't like to vote, I feel like nothing matters more in our community because this is a community that thrives and has enormous compassion and empathy overall. I think that's a good ground to stand on. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Andrew, one minute.
Hello, my name is Andrew Georgievitz. I am 38 years old. I have been born and raised in Concord, New Hampshire my entire life. Actually went to high school here in the studio that we're in at Concord High School. The city is at a crucial point where our school board budget is out of control and our city council budget is out of control. Right now, being a fiscal conservative is the most important thing addressing the city right now. Because of these budget shortfalls, this is what we need to focus on. If we cannot pay salaries for city workers, police, or fire, we don't have a city. These challenges were faced by the last city council, and I asked them to think about the budget, and unfortunately, they were short called. Those shortcomings are going to be pushed on to the taxpayer. It is my hope to earn your vote so that I can dive deeper into the budget and understand where money is going, and to also understand what we need for commercial development to increase and broaden the tax base. Again, my name is Andrew Georgievitz, live in the city with my wife and two sons, and I ask for your support.
Thank you, Andrew. Ali, you have one minute.
Thank you, 24Huston Des. Thank you, Concord TV. It's a great honor to be here today. Good evening, everyone. Ali Seko is speaking here. I'm a father, a husband, and somebody who loved Concord. I was not born in Concord, but I made Concord a home. Since I immigrated to the United States, Concord always has been part of my life and part of who I am today. I had the great honor to serve Concord for the last two years, specifically Ward Eight, and with my colleagues, we collaborated together to advance the city, make it a city for all, where everybody and every family can thrive. And I'm asking today for your vote to continue this work that we started together. Few examples that we have done talking about fiscal responsibilities. Of course, we reduced the tax base by 2.95% or 2.96%. Talking about safety, if you go today at the Kitch Park Light, we have gates when kids cannot run on the Loudoun Road. We did the Kitch Park Light, are working on the Arapahoe Road. So there is a lot of accomplishment that Ward Eight can be proud of, and I thank everybody for the trust and the honor that you placed in me to continue and ask for your vote to continue serving Concord, make it a great city for all, tackling all the challenges that are facing Concord today, from housing to homelessness and everything else in between. Thank you.
Thank you, Ali. Jonathan, you are next. You have one minute.
Well, as has been said, my name is Jonathan Kate. I am running for your city council for Ward Nine. I actually went to school here with Andrew Georgievitz back a long time ago, back in 2005. I graduated here. I used to ride my bike from 470 to Sigh Barlet Road every good morning I could to Concord High School because that's the city I lived in. It is no longer that city. I would not allow my kids to do it. As a father of three, soon to be four, it's, this is unattainable, and this isn't a new problem. This is a problem that's been manifesting since 2006 and continues today. For the last 20 years, city council has completely reneged on its social contract with the citizens of Concord to give us the basics that we need: fire, police, good road service, and waste management, where we're at a crucial point where we need to take care of these things, which at the current way we prioritize things will not with this next city council or the city council after that, and I'm running to change that. And as one of the last dairy farms in the city, there's one other, you know, I have a vested interest in this place for the next 100 years, and that's why I'm running, so that my kids going forward will have a place to be too. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. All right, let's get the tough questions first out of the way, and then we'll talk about all the things later, all right? Like homeless crime and everything else. All right, Chris, we're going to start with you first. During your first term, you had the third worst attendance of any of the city councilors, missing six meetings, and you also missed nine meetings of your subcommittee meetings that you serve on, according to the city data. You also serve as a state representative, so we know that you're busy and have a lot of things that are going on. Two questions, and it'll be the similar thing for everybody. Are you too busy to serve in both roles, and what guarantees will you give voters in your new term if you are to win that you will improve your attendance? One minute.
I don't believe I've missed that many city council meetings. I don't know if you're counting the fiscal committee, which is different.
Right, those are, you've missed, you were assigned to, you had to attend those meetings, so yes. As a city councillor, you've missed those meetings.
I've missed one city council meeting. The committees that I've been placed on, I've always done my best to show up, but I would have to look at the dates. You know, if I missed any, it's because either my mother had passed away, or the fact that my nephew became a priest, or I was ill. I don't miss things flippantly. But as far as I know, whether it's at the State House or at the city council, I have shown up for the people of Ward Nine, to the point that I'm even asked to be a sub when needed at the State House, for example. At this point, this is all I do. And so I would love to see those dates, but I believe I've only missed one city council meeting.
Thank you. So just to be clear, it's six, six meetings as a councillor, including the two budget meetings, and those were confirmed by the city clerk's minutes posted online, and then the subcommittee meeting, so, okay. Andrew, you have a young family and are a busy father with engaged employment, I know because you're always on the phone. You're involved in many different activities in the city, including Kiwanis and your church committee, church community, excuse me. Will you be too busy with the commitment needed to serve in the council with all of the meetings and subcommittee meetings that you have to attend?
I will not be too busy. I will show up. I make it to Kiwanis, I make it to church, I'm active with parades. I am here, I am invested in this community. For the past 38 years I've been here, people know me, and they know I show up. When the community needs me, I am there. If I am privileged to earn your vote, I will be there to be your voice at the city council.
So you're going to guarantee voters, if you're elected, you're not going to miss meetings. You're going to make sure you're there.
I'm telling you right now.
If you win and Chris challenges you, she's going to say you weren't at meetings.
Absolutely. I will be there.
Okay. Ali, you have the second worst attendance record on the city, as a city councillor, with seven missed meetings, and, but only three subcommittee meetings. You were late to several of them, and that happens with everybody. Everybody can be late, so it doesn't really count. Are you too busy to serve as a city councillor, and/or what will you do to improve your attendance if elected to a second term?
Okay, so you said the three, and those three doesn't count, so four?
Seven, seven meetings and three subcommittee meetings.
Okay, so I'm never too busy to serve Concord, and you can look at my records. Since I immigrated to the United States, I have been a public servant. Concord always has been home. You can list them, you can look anywhere around Concord where Ali served in the greater community. So I'm a father of three. The two that I miss might be when my baby was born or when I'm performing Hajj, which is a very crucial thing for me and a life-changing. And I would be happy to share pictures of Hajj where everybody asks me about it. So everybody that knows me knows how I take seriously my responsibility. The city council cannot testify to that, and everybody that work with me. I'm never too busy to serve, I'm never too busy to serve Concord. That has given me a lot. It's my turn. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan, your family's been in Concord, I believe, two, more than two and a half centuries. You run a rather large farm on the east side of the city. Two years ago, when we had our forum, you were late due to a tractor breaking down, and we had to splice all of your questions in, your answers to the questions, to be fair to all the candidates. Considering all of the agriculture industry entails today, will you be too busy to be a city councillor? One minute, please.
Well, yeah, I mean, right now I should be milking cows, but I'm sitting here. I employ people, and there are always, and no offense to all of my fellow city councilors that are running, you will all miss meetings. I don't care. Life happens, people die, people get sick. I, if you'll notice, probably have a hideous eye on one side. That's because I'm having a migraine that I've had for the last month I'm here, you know? But if you had this on Friday, I was hospitalized. I'm going to make it to every meeting I possibly can, which is going to be about 90% of them, and I can guarantee that with a certainty, because the only thing that's important to me, more than my own career, are my kids. And quite frankly, I want them to have the same experience in Concord that I had growing up here 30 years ago.
Thank you. Ali, let's go to you, and we'll work, everybody gets the same question, work our way around. During this budget cycle, I heard from many residents who were clamoring for property tax relief. The best the council could do is muster a 1% reduction in what the city manager wanted, and that took six hours of debate. Some likened the process to, and maybe unfairly, to a clown show. In hindsight, what would you do differently for fiscal year 2027 to ensure that there's actual relief for taxpayers without, you know, for lack of a better term, meaningless endless debate over virtually nothing?
Thank you. I think there is nothing better than this question, and I love this question because I get it asked all the time. As a renter and as somebody who work with communities that are underserved in many ways, or communities that are in this challenge, need more support, I will say that fiscal responsibility always has been one of my strongest suits. I work with councillors, I can name a few of them, before even the budget where we said, let's see what we can do. And I want to say something here, Tony, very important, because when you said what the city manager wanted, we don't go based what, based on what the city manager wanted. We go based on what is good for Concord. And as somebody who was born in a small village in Western Africa that know the amenities that we have here, it's a privilege, it's a blessing to have them, so we have to look at those amenities that we have today to make sure that we continue to have them. The only way we can do it is extending the tax base, and we will get to that soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan, same question for you. What would you do differently if you're in the council to deal with the the property tax relief request of voters?
Well, quite frankly, I'm not sure what city council is doing. They don't get budgets. How do they know what they're voting for, when they approve or disapprove? I mean, you're not getting line item expenditures from any departments. You're just getting an overall budget per department, and that's not a budget. If I were to sit there and present that to any Fortune 500 CFO, I'd be fired on the spot. It is atrocious, and the fact that you let the city manager get away with that is atrocious, and that's how you only get 1%. You know, quite frankly, I don't think you should be gutting the city budget with a machete, but, you know, I mean, a little responsibility when he brings up the budget and you look at it and say, what's this? That's not a budget. Go back and do your work. You're getting paid $278,000 a year. Bring me back something that's acceptable. And then you table the meeting and move on. Quite frankly, if he can't do his job, then he gets removed. I mean, this is how things need to be done, and I understand you need 10 votes, but quite frankly, as a citizen who's paying the amount of taxes that I'm paying, I'm tired of it. And I can assure you, there's a bunch of elderly people who are being pushed out of their homes who are also tired of it. So that's what needs to be happening.
Thank you. Chris, you were, of course, you're running for your second term. You were there.
Yep.
What would you have done, what will you do differently if you win for the next fiscal year?
First of all, we need to give credit where credit is due. I believe the clown show reference came from you. Am I wrong?
I stole it.
Okay.
I was like, yeah, it's kind of a clown show right now. Yeah, I would agree with that statement.
I would not, I totally understand why people are frustrated with the whole process because I'm also very frustrated with the process. I feel like the fact that we didn't have work sessions ahead of time, that plans were given to us by other councillors and the mayor as they were being discussed with no, you know, after all these hearings and hearings and hearings, that, you know, that we didn't have a chance to really break that down was a real problem, and among the reasons why it took so long. If I knew at the, at the beginning of the meeting how it was going to end up, I probably would have supported Councillor Keach's proposal, which was a more aggressive cut. I think that we need to make drastic cuts. I wouldn't do it on the backs of workers in the city. I would not renig on our contract negotiations with the labor unions. I do think, though, that we can both hold off on a number of projects that we haven't launched yet, possibly the police building we can put on hold. And also, we need to give the city a chance, or for citizens to have a chance to put input into the master plan, which is going to be a very important part of this, and we need to look at our city reserves, which I hope we can spend more time on in a moment.
Thank you. Andrew, same question, and you, your opponent had a couple of, about 20 more seconds, so if you want to take a little bit more time, you can.
So when a budget is presented, I think about my household budget. I can't just, as John said, go by line items. I need to do a deep dive into the money I have coming in and the money I have going out. And something that John and I share is, we get that property tax bill. That bill comes in the mail, and we have to pay it. If we don't pay it, then we lose our homes. That's what happens. So when taxes are being talked about being raised to cover debt, we need to think, if you can't afford it, then you don't have a home. At the end of the day, the way I look at things is, taxes need to be addressed, but the budget needs to be dissected. Something to help the budget is more construction in our city to make the tax base larger.
Thank you. Jonathan, housing is one of the biggest problems facing the city. The city officials and councillors have been working with developers when they can, and hundreds of new units have been placed on the market. The problem is, though, that most of the new units are limited to people who are really affluent, single-family homes that are going, and the new ones are about 700 grand. The rentals are three and change, and the subsidized units, which are 1,500, which is nice, but you can only make 53,000. Most, you know, to get into, say, the rail yard units are around 1,500 a month, but you can only make 53,000 to get into that unit, meaning everybody, the majority of the earners of the city, which are in the 60 to 80, maybe 100 range, can't really get into either of those units that we've been building in the city.
I agree.
What can be done to ensure that there are new rental units that are accessible to the most city residents, which would be in that 60 to 100 range?
My question is, why do we need more housing? You have a waste management problem that is at capacity at both the Hall Street location and the incinerator. Why are we worried about that right now? I mean, it's a problem, sure, but I guess if I'm going to prioritize, if we're already at capacity, which, by the way, the director is going to be retiring in, what, two years? Am I correct on that? So now you've got a new guy coming in, already at capacity. We want to worry about housing more people, more strain on services, such as the fire department, which is already short-staffed, seven people. They need a new fire department, what they want. And yeah, I don't see it as a problem. I think that, quite frankly, or at least not an immediate problem, you know, quite frankly, my wife and I have had that problem looking for places. I got to tell you, as a city councillor, your bigger problem is simply the fact that we don't have the resources to take care of these homes. So personally, I don't know. I think that we can kick that can down the road a little bit more. Let's worry about our, getting our, our public services back on track.
Thank you. Ali, same question to you. What would you do in the next term to ensure that there's new rental units that are accessible to most city residents, and granted, with understanding within your power as a councillor, you're essentially a volunteer. I don't want to, just for viewers.
He did tell me he would go out and build them himself.
They can't weave the magic wand and make them appear, but they do interact with developers and planners and everything else. Go ahead, Ali. You've got a minute.
Thank you, Tony. I think you made it very easy, but I do have to say that we cannot talk about economic development. You hire people in this city. As you said, you have a business. We start talking about housing, and what type of salary or earning people are getting. Tony explained it very well, where we are talking about people that are earning below 53,000. That's what you said, right? So I think literally there should be more developer applying for affordable housing tax credits. We should look at private and public partnership to make sure that our city is attracting talent, because nowadays, I was just reading an article today, the last 10 years, the cost of living have increased by 17,000. How can somebody afford to live in 10, back 10 years ago, you were paying now your cost of living, just your cost of living, 17,000? So I think if we really want to make this happen, we have to look at public-private partnership, work with businesses, and have developer apply for affordable housing, and also have the city apply for federal money. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew, same question to you.
So John touched upon infrastructure, and I'm going to kind of go off of that in the sense of, we have the housing units right now. We've got the rail yard that's come online in the past two years. We've got a Crossham Sam's Club that's come online in the past two years. We've got the Bechtash Temple that, those 300 units have come online in the past two years. They are not, and the Isabella Apartments, those units are not full. So when you say, we need housing, we need, they are not full. We have single-family dwellings that are available in Ward Nine, in Ward Eight. Drive up any street, and you'll see for sale signs. To your point of that 60 to 80,000 dollar mark of, again, a single person could not afford. Again, if I didn't buy when I did, my house on Zillow shows 550 now. That's ridiculous. I paid 235. I'm taxed at 9100 dollars a year. People can't afford to live here if they don't have a good job. We need to bring better jobs to Concord. We have the housing. We need better jobs. That will then work with getting people to be able to afford the houses.
Thank you. Chris, same question.
Yes, thank you. I agree that we need more housing. We definitely need more housing. And the notion that there are tons of available houses, as someone who is looking to purchase, I can say, it doesn't feel like that yet. I hope that's true. I want that to be true. Even with the new developments, many of them are actually for people 55 and older at this point. I also want to correct something I brought up by my opponent, that actually the majority of, of people who live in Ward Nine are either renters or live in a senior home that is a nonprofit facility. And if our taxes stay high, rent keeps going up, and that's what I've been experiencing as a renter myself. In fact, your rent never goes back down. And that is something that is really hard to stomach when referencing Councillor Seko's point that the New Hampshire Fiscal Policy Institute recently came out with a study the day we're taping this, and the average family is paying 17,000 dollars more a year for things that they had 10 years ago. So that is a reflection of many things, including our property taxes, which are too high, and so are rents.
Thank you.
Tony, can I add one thing? Because housing issues is nationwide. It's not only Concord. So we cannot avoid this issue by saying that we don't have housing crisis.
So let's take a minute and just go beyond that, because you, you've also said in your answer, you know, you think that there should be more housing credits. But the housing credits are one of the reasons that you, that you guys have a shortfall this year, not only the sale of Dupree's buildings, one to the city and one to the state, but also Rosemary's Place, Rosemary's Way, excuse me, the rail yard. They've all applied for the, for the state tax credit and are not going to be paying property taxes because they filed for the state tax credit, and you're going to, you're, one of the reasons you're short is because of the tax credit. I mean, that is a negative, that is a, that is a positive because it got the building built, but it's a negative because all of a sudden, now you've got the two Dupree buildings off the rolls. You've got three apartment buildings off the rolls because they took the state tax credit, and the state didn't give us anything to build the, to have the, help skid the, you know, grease the skins to get those buildings built, but now we're short, you know, thousands of dollars in, in revenue.
So I will answer that, because I think when I was talking about tax credit, you are talking about state tax credit. I'm talking about Lytex nine credit, and of course, it's limited. It's not for, like, for that.
That's true. It is limited.
Yes.
But the New Hampshire housing, but that's, that's the tax credit that they're all taking advantage.
That's correct. So, and then I want to add one more thing, because I, I think when people talk about affordable housing, they forget about the tax base that affordable housing can bring too. If you look at the list that was recently shared, the Royal Garden is the ninth most paying taxes in the city of Concord.
Right.
That's a fact.
Yeah.
So we have to really give where credit belong and do our homework to understand how the tax credit work.
And hopefully, they won't ask for the tax credit, redoing all their units.
Can I jump in here?
Yeah, I'm going to have you jump in, and then I'm going to have Andrew and Chris actually jump in on the tax.
Yeah, but that's highly, that's highly misleading. Concord Royal Gardens is the largest housing complex in the city. So on a per capita basis, based on the taxes received, it's actually the lowest tax, because quite frankly, my property doesn't pay taxes. I pay taxes, okay? So as somebody who sits there on 250 acres, paying taxes, you know, I look at that and say, well, now, hold on a second. You know, that's, that's comparing apples and oranges. It's just my family on that. And quite frankly, like I said, those units tend to use a lot more services than everything else. So the more units we bring in with better tax credits for the state, which quite frankly, isn't great, you know, it increases the city services and a decrease in net taxes to the city, which is where our budget shortfalls keep coming.
So just to be clear, then, what you're saying is, is that it's not just the entity that it's taxed. It's also the renters, but the renters are also the users of the services as well as, versus, say, a farm. Where your cows will just mill around and do, you know, do dairy things, right?
Absolutely. I'm hauling my own manure. I'm not having, you know, that's, that's just it.
All right. Andrew and Chris, I'll let you both chime in. Chris, quick, on the, on the, let Chris go first on the housing.
Well, I also say, certainly farms have, receive a lot of credits.
What credits?
I forget the name of the exact one, but there, there definitely are.
I have current, I have, I have current, I have current use, and it's still 17,000 just for that property alone, never mind the other properties.
That's interesting to know, but I will also say, as a renter, we pay our taxes through our rent. And my rent has gone up over almost 200 dollars a month in the last three years. That is untenable. What was the initial question, by the way?
Just about tax, just about tax credits in general.
Well, I do want to also.
You do have the offset of, of the.
Economic development credits.
I believe it's four buildings this year, all filed for the state abatement.
Right.
Which, and, which is one of the reasons that we're in a school and city budget shortfall, as well as the Dupree buildings.
And I think that we need to not hand them out willy-nilly. I can't say I voted for any of that necessarily at the state level. I think that's handled through a different process, but, and, at least. But in, at least as the city is concerned, I don't support every economic development project because those tax credits do cost us money. We need to look at what kind of jobs are being created and what the rents actually are yielding for the people that live there, as well as the developers.
Sure. Andrew.
So to be as, as clear as possible is that the budget shortfalls, again, commercial development. We need to have that in the city to grow the tax base so that these budget shortfalls do not happen.
Andrew, let's go to you. We're going to change the subject here. Some people in the city think there should be a sanctioned homeless campground with social workers, police and EMTs available to the campers, all paid by taxpayers. Would you support this proposal? And also, yes or no? And also, will you work if elected to get other communities like Bow Loudon, Hopkinton and/or the county to play a larger role in taking care of the homeless in our city?
So as for a sanctioned homeless encampment area, I can disagree with that wholeheartedly. I feel that, one magic word, liability. A city sanctioned area where anything, and I mean, anything could happen. And they're coming back. When people are suing McDonald's because of hot coffee, they told me I could be in this area in the city and I overdosed, or I got my drugs there, or I got arrested there. It is only going to hurt the city. If you build it, they will come. And that is not looking at the amount that we've paid for homeless camp cleanups in this city, 200, $300,000 at a time. You can't send the Boy Scouts in to clean up these camps. The, the needles, the feces, just purely disgusting. I am all for helping someone. That's why I go to McHale-Hardamary Church. I will help. I'm part of the five and two ministry. I will help you, but you've got to want to help yourself. We have programs in the city that we pay millions, that spend millions, excuse me, to help people. We need to put people to those good programs to have them get the assistance they need.
Chris, where are you on the sanctioned homeless campground?
I'm, would love to see the proposal and I have a lot of questions. Just off the top, I would say I don't support that. That does sound like it would cost the city a, a lot more money than it would solve. I do want to say however, I find the characterization that my opponent has of who the homeless are and what their problems are to be a little offensive. You have to remember that in our homeless population, it is over 100 kids in the Concord School District alone. That doesn't count the kids in the Merrimack Valley School District that are homeless. That includes families and people working full-time. You know, I, I want to bring to mind Tim Russell, who passed away recently, a 29-year-old father who was the next on the list to receive housing. Reminder, he had a full-time job. How can you not be able to afford a house in this community or a place to rent if you're working full-time? And I understand the answer is a little more complex, but basically, we aren't paying people enough to afford transportation and housing and the basics. Then add to that, so many more people are one healthcare emergency, one relationship breakup, or you know, one other unexpected expense away from not being able to afford their mortgage or their rent either. It is far more complicated and difficult and far more people are homeless that not in the sort of demonization, actually, I don't think anybody deserves to be demonized to fix this issue.
I'm the one who found Tim's body at the baseball field.
Oh, I didn't know that.
And, and I don't want to speak ill of the dead, but he had a very long rap sheet. And it was, it's very tragic, tragic situation, the way he was discovered.
And he was also a good father who worked full-time and never missed a day of work.
True, that's true. And in fact, when they, apparently one of the stories that, when he didn't show up for work, everybody was worried. Let's go to Jonathan and Ollie, same question on the sanctioned homeless camp.
No, it's a complete liability. If you want to bankrupt the city further than we've already have, then I think it's a great idea, but no, no, I'm not going to, I don't want to sanction that.
Will you also, second part of the question, work as a city councillor to try and get all of our surrounding communities to take a larger role?
What is their responsibility in that?
Well, let me give you an example. So there, there, one of the, there is not many very, very, there aren't large parcels of land where the campground could be built. Most of them are probably between 10 to 12 miles away from city services. We're told we must continue to bankroll the housing coalition's projects because the homeless people need to be able to walk to services. At the point of building a campground 10, 12 miles out, you can build it in Loudon. You can build it in Bow.
But what?
You can build it in Hopkinton and/or ask them to build it instead of having Concord do it and having all of the strain on Concord services. That would be something I would think a city councillor would want to promote after all of the things we've done to try and help homeless people in the city. Whereas Bow does, I don't know, nothing, right?
I, 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 homelessness is a, is a terrible, terrible thing. I've never experienced it. I, I do have a great deal of sympathy for them, but to, again, what extent is it the taxpayer's job to, essentially you're asking me, just based on how taxes work, hey, take care of this guy over here and if you don't, I'm going to take your house from you. I don't know. That seems a bit harsh. I mean, that's essentially how that works. If I, if I, if I put my money in escrow and say, no, no, I'm not paying taxes. I just, this is a bridge too far for me. I just feel like you're picking my pocket to give to that person over there and I don't have it. I just, I don't have it. I don't have the money and you know, that's that. I, you know, they're coming for your house. So I don't know, it seems like a bridge too far for me. That's all.
Ollie, where are you on the sanctioned homeless campground and what will you do in the next term to help get other communities involved in solving the problem?
Tony, thank you for doing some educational this year. I think it's very important that we do follow the role, the law. There is a law by the federal government and also I want to say this, responsibilities matters, compassion and accountability can and should or must exist. So we have all these things to look in place. We have to have that compassion, but also we have to be accountable for what is happening. I think we, councillor Schultz was talking about loving your neighbors. Those are our brothers and sisters and mothers and we all know somebody that is homeless. And you just shared a tragedy that happened in Ward Eight. I attended Tim's funeral and I think everybody or anybody who work in this field, either a nonprofit or who is in the housing world, we know that we can resolve these issues if we bring ourselves together, examine this issue, take responsibility and hold ourselves accountable. To answer your question about surrounding cities, I think when people work together, the problem is solved. So I think every town should do their part and it's a responsibility for every town by law. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, back to you. You serve, I think you serve on, actually, the city says you serve on Solid Waste Committee.
Oh, I do.
Okay. Automated trash pickup is scheduled to begin next year. Some are suggesting that the change is a good opportunity to end the purple bag tax and go back to having solid waste be on, on the tax bill. Where do you come down on, on that, that issue?
Yes, I've seen all the demos of the automatic pickup of garbage. It's really interesting. It's going to start rolling out next year. I think though, that this is in part because of the fact that we can't hire enough folks to be garbage collectors.
They make decent money too. It's a rough job. They make a lot of money.
Let's face it. A lot of different professions are not respected the way that hard work should be respected and that's something I fight for in both the City Hall and at the State House. We need to respect all work, any work that's needed, but that's a whole other conversation. I have mixed feelings about the purple bags, even though as a renter, I've never purchased one. I will be honest about that. But the purple bag program has saved everyone a lot of money by diverting materials that were recyclable out of the other stream of waste. Cause garbage collecting and processing is expensive. So we, whatever we offset, if we choose to not do the purple bags, which again, I have mixed feelings about eliminating, we definitely would need to review the budget and make sure that's a, a good decision to make. I'm not sure that it is.
Okay. Andrew.
So we sat here two years ago and discussed this trash issue two years ago about how recycling was going to see, going from free pickup for recycling to $100 a tip. And then we talked about trash going from, I believe it was 75 to 100. For a decade, it was great not having to pay for recycling. Now overseas, they're not buying our recycling. People still want it. That's great. But at the end of the day, we need to look at what it's going to cost the city. And it's great that we have Casella and they run the dumps, but we need other bids. There are other trash companies for larger cities and I'd like to see if we can't put that out to bid again and see if we can't get a more competitive number back. When you only have one person bidding on a job, the number can come in with whatever. Again, I'd like to see the trash contract go out to bid. If we cannot get the resources for people to work the trash trucks, then automation, it's on its way. But the purple bags, I've heard complaint after complaint after complaint of the thickness of how weak and flimsy they are. And at the end of the day, people need to realize that trash needs to go somewhere and that our city needs to be responsible for that.
Thank you. Ollie.
So purple bag has always been something that we heard about, people saying that it's very expensive, but I do want to say environment is something that is very important and recycling is very important, either it gets sold or not, we always have to take care of this environment. And I do want to say also that it's very good to have separated trash and recycling. So I am open-minded. I'm open to having whatever work for the city of Concord and I am, when elected, willing to work with the city administration and the city council to make sure that we offer the best option for the city of Concord. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan.
I think I'd like to see the budget first because quite frankly, anytime you eliminate one source of income, you then have to pay for it some way else. So again, I, I would love to get rid of it. Don't get me wrong. I mean, I'm, I know plenty of people who bought those little purple bags, including myself, and nobody likes it. So you know, I'd definitely be open to it, but I think we got a few other things that need to be taken care of first.
Thank you. Let's do a quick one here and see where we're at with time and we'll start, Jonathan, with you and we'll go around. Please share quickly three ideas on what you would do to support expanding the tax base.
One, I would try to help the Concord Airport to build that extra terminal and those extra three hangars they want to build on the backside. I think those are tax dollars that don't use any more resources than we already have and those are things we need. Another thing is, we need to start bringing in more industry and I don't mean more restaurants. They use city services too. I'm talking about more industrializing industrial parks such as, I mean, companies such as, you know, Continental, who owns the, the Concord Sand and Gravel in my ward. We need more things like that where, you know, there's going to be tax revenue from that. So, and then you said there was one more thing I needed to do.
Three.
Three?
You need one more.
Oh geez, rob a bank. There's only, there's only two sources of, of tax revenue and that's residential or industrial.
Would you support, very quickly in five seconds, a, a more expansive airport project that developed all the way down Airport Road?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Ollie, three ideas please.
Excellent question. As we were talking about tax and how can we make sure that the burden is not on taxpayers, I will work with the city and the city council to extend commercial and taxable base. And also I will encourage the city administration to apply for more when available federal money, because I think once we have those federal money, we are just having now a bridge built or, or Loudon Road Bridge, that 80% of it is from the federal money. So I think there is many other options. And of course, continuing the partnership, public and private partnership, helping people to bring more businesses. As somebody who sit on the economic development committee, that's what we have been doing, exploring all ways to make sure that we bring businesses to help alleviate the tax burden on taxpayers and build a tax base. So those are the three sources. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew.
So expanding Chanel Drive, continuing it all the way through. It was discontinued in the eighties. There is land there. I would see expansion there. That is airport growth also, more hangars. Hangars don't put kids in school. Hangars don't call the police. Hangars don't call the fire department. They are taxed. Also the mall. Two and a half years ago, we started talking about the mall, still sitting there, two and a half years later. And then also some land was just cleared behind Chipotle in Concord, a nice plot of land. I'd like to see some light manufacturing. There are areas in town that could have some light industry brought into it that would then drive better jobs and higher wages.
Excellent. Thank you. Chris, three ideas.
Yes, to be quick, hopefully. We don't talk enough about what the state should be paying. The state pays almost nothing. I get that we have a benefit from the state hosting them as the capital, but if you look at the number of ways the city helps the state too, we aren't getting enough money back for things like the firefighters transporting every prisoner from the state prisons to Concord Hospital or other healthcare facilities. That's, they should be charged more. That's one of many examples. We also need to recruit businesses that pay well and those are the folks that should get the tax credits. And those that don't, like the big box store companies like Walmart that pay poorly, we should institute a big box tax that would bring in money. We also should have more fair property taxes when we look at larger homes. I think that we should, especially since they're a bigger burden on our infrastructure and everything, that they also can afford more and we should charge them more.
Thank you. All right. Let's do the incumbents first, another run, what, real quick one. There's been, in this last term, you had a huge turnover and there has been a tenor, some have said, some have been critical of the tenor of some of the meetings. Most of that is on the blame, put the blame on one person who gets sidetracked every month talking about a lot of other things that continue to go on and on. But Chris, give me one example of, of one tactic you will use in the next term to improve the tenor of meetings, even though you're not the mayor and you don't structure the meetings, but what will you do as a member?
I think I've already talked about one of the most important ones and that's the way that we talk about and plan for the actual budget vote day itself. We could, can do many things better than how we handled that in both of the years' budgets that we, we talked about. That is also the most important part. We need to have work sessions that are public where we go through the options and don't just leave those cuts to the city manager like that person's going to choose it and then like the, the way that we as a council would want it to be.
Good. Ollie.
Could you please repeat the question because I am seeing it in two ways.
Sure, sure. So the tenor of the meetings, you know, a lot, a lot of people, you know, are, are kind of critical.
So you're talking about resident of Concord?
Yeah.
How we can help them.
What can you do differently to make the meetings go more smoothly, to have them be more cordial, you know, to maybe be more efficient sometimes?
I think as you said, we all have responsibility, but I think everybody on the council take their work seriously. What we do have to have is really having that collaborative mindset. We are all serving the city of Concord, talking to the resident, inviting them to those critical issues. I recently shared with my, our community here that there's nothing more important than having elected officers in your local community to represent you, because that's around the table. Every decision that we take there affect everybody in the city. So I will continue to encourage people to attend meetings by sharing specifically the topics that they should be there. Their voices are very important and their voices are critical.
Jonathan, what will you bring as a newcomer if you're elected to change the tenor of meetings?
Oh, try to keep my answers short and concise.
You can attend too.
Well, that's the only thing, that's the only thing I can control, that's the only thing I can control as a human being is what I do.
Running against the clock anyway. That's a good answer. All right. Andrew, you're next. What do you bring as a newcomer if you get elected to, to change the tenor of meetings?
Know the agenda in advance, be prepared, show up and have my research conducted to be able to present and make an articulate statement quickly.
Great. Thank you so much. So we're right up against the clock, so we're going to go to closing statements now. Chris went first last, so Jonathan, you go first and we'll go that way. You have one minute to make your closing argument.[1772.83]
As I said, Jonathan, Kate, I'm running for your for your uh, vote in Ward Eight. Um, like I said, I just don't see the direction of the city changing as it hasn't changed in the last twenty years. I know because I've been here. And quite frankly, it's time for a different set of leadership at City Hall. I think a whole broad-based difference. And that doesn't make my opponents uh, wrong or bad people. It's just a difference of idea. Um, and I think it's time that we get new ideas in the city because, quite frankly, um, people like me who have kids who have roots here and hope to have tree limbs stretching out into the centuries after, um, depend on it. So I am seeking your vote, and I hope you will vote for me. If not, vote for him, but he's the only other option, so you're good.
Either one, one, either way, one of you will win.
That's right. That's right. He's he's, he's a good guy, so it's it's fine.
Thank you. We share a lot in common. We just last time spent a lot of time discussing outside. A husband and a father of three, Concord has been home, all my kids has been born here at the Concord Hospital. So what I am, it has been a life, an honor of my lifetime to serve you for the last two years. And I'm asking for your vote again to continue serving, to continue bringing those that I listed earlier, what Ward Eight need, in particular, and the city of Concord at large. Thank you very much for the trust you place in me in the last two years, and I'm looking forward to working with you and to serving you again.
Thank you. Andrew, one minute.
As I said, my name is Andrew Georgevitz. I'm a lifelong resident of Concord. Lived here for thirty-eight years, born at Concord Hospital, father of two wonderful sons and a wonderful wife that puts up with me and allows me to be here tonight to speak to you, to ask for your vote. Concord has a budget crisis. I'm a homeowner who has to make a budget. If not, I lose my house. Fiscal conservative is the way to look at the city budget so that we cannot tax the elderly out of their homes. It is imperative, with my construction background, to make it so we, the city council can promote construction and development in the city. We're sixty-four square mile city. We have the land. We need commercial development that is going to help broaden the tax base and give relief to those who most need it. Again, my name is Andrew Georgevitz. I'm running for city council in Ward Nine, and I ask for your support on November fourth. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, one-minute closing statement.
Thank you. I'm Chris Schultz. I ask for your vote if you live in Ward Nine. You can go to my website or find my phone number on the city site to call me if you have any questions or to seek more of my views. I would like to also take this opportunity, since I'm sharing uh, the stage with the candidates in Ward Eight. Ali Seku has been an amazing counselor and deputy mayor. He has filled in when the mayor couldn't be there. I hope you will choose him. If you're not in Ward Nine, I I hope you choose me. But I want to just take a moment to, he would probably say nice things about me and endorse me too if it had gone the other way. So I just wanted to make sure that folks know he's been just absolutely fantastic. And I hope that he and I can continue to serve together.
Has been a great honor to serve with you. And as I always said, coming together, sitting at a restaurant recently, when there was a tragedy on Loudon Road, the first things we did, we called the mayor and we said with the mayor to explore what ways we can do. So it's been a great honor and blessing to serve with you. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Those are the candidates running in Ward Eight and Ward Nine for the city council seats in twenty twenty-five. Jonathan and Ollie are on the Ward Eight ballot, and Andrew and Chris are on the Ward Nine ballot. Polls are open seven AM to seven PM on Tuesday, November fourth. Information can be found in the elections section of the city website now, or you can check out the Patch Voter Guide online the week before the election. For Concord TV, again, thank you so much. And Patch, I'm Tony Chanel. We'll see you next time.